Good evening, everybody. Good evening, students, parents, families. Good evening, professional educators. Good evening. On behalf of the board, welcome to our November business meeting. We are extremely happy that a majority of our meeting tonight is dedicated to presenting and recognizing our scholar athletes, our scholar artists, our professional educators who have earned some amazing grants. Do want to give you a couple bits of information. When we are finished with all the presentations, we will pause so if people want to take pictures with their students by their artwork, or if people would like to leave, you're welcome to do that. But you're also welcome to stay for the entire meeting. Also, when we finish each one of the separate presentations, Courtney Taylor is going to take a picture of the students, so we'll pause in between each one of our presentations as well. And with that bit of information, we will move straight into roll call.
All members are present.
Fantastic. Next, please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda this evening are our Young Artist Awards, and for that, we'll have Dr. Dudley join us over at the podium.
Well, good evening. It's my honor tonight to honor our young artists, and you can see their artwork behind us here in the boardroom. This will be on display for the next six months for us all to enjoy the fantastic work that our students do. First, before we honor our individual artists, I'd first like to honor our art teachers. If you are here, if you could please stand to be recognized. I know we have many of them in the audience. Thank you so much for guiding our young artists to really create some fantastic pieces. And this is just a small sampling of what our students do each and every day, and so we do appreciate what our art teachers do for all of our students. So, boys and girls, when I do call your names, if you will come up, and we have a certificate for you that we will present, and then if you'd like, you can go through and shake the board members' hands, and then we're going to have everybody collect over here for a picture. And Dr. Beersford is going to give you your certificate. Our first young artist is Abby Banks, a fifth-grade student from Carmel Elementary. Faith Lawrence, an 11th-grade student at Carmel High School. Jordan Ice, an eighth-grade student at Carmel Middle School. Dylan Walworth, a fifth-grade student at Cherry Tree Elementary. Michael Clark, a sixth-grade student at Clay Middle School. Taylor Zong, a fifth-grade student at College Wood Elementary. Ruth Millstone, an eighth-grade student at Creekside Middle. Lily Haas Stettler, a fourth-grade student at Forestale Elementary. Joe Justin, a fifth-grade student at Mohawk Trails. Luisa Fernandez, a second-grade student at Orchard Park Elementary. Anna Ososki, a fifth-grade student at Prairie Trace Elementary. Maylin Monson, a fifth-grade student at Smokey Row Elementary. Sophia Shin, a third-grade student at Town Meadow. Elizabeth York, a second-grade student at West Clay Elementary. And Molly Deem, a fourth-grade student at Woodbrook Elementary. And congratulations to all of our young artists.
Next on the agenda, we have Mr. Jimmy Inskeep, who's going to present the Carmel High School Girls Soccer 2018 State Champions.
Thank you, Mrs. Spannenberg, Dr. Beersford, and members of the board. It's an honor and privilege to be before you again tonight to recognize three separate athletic teams from the fall that had unbelievable seasons and capped them off with IHSA state championships here in the last month. Our first group this evening that's going to come forward is our girls soccer team, led by head coach Frank Dixon. If they could come over by the table here. Just a few comments about the team as they come forward. They defeated Homestead in the state championship game at IUPUI's Carroll Stadium on October 27th in overtime, two to one. The one goal given up by the Greyhounds in that game was only their fifth of the season and their first in the tournament. Truly an incredible defensive effort all year. It was the 10th IHSA state championship for the program, and the team finished 21 and two ties during the season. There are about 75 student athletes in this program, and as I'll say about each of these three teams, it takes a lot of working together to make moments like this happen. And for us, not only our wonderful student athletes who are here tonight that get the job done in the classroom and represent our community so well on the field, but their parents as well, that I can't tell you the amount of time they give up sitting in parking lots, waiting for practices to end, and sitting in cold rainy weather and everywhere else. So hats off to them as well. So at this time, I'm going to have head coach Frank Dixon come up to introduce each of our seniors that are here this evening. First, we have Kate Donovan. Elizabeth Hargus. Emily Spadell. Elise Reed. Autumn Ackerman. And Ashley Vitucki. And my coaching staff. Our next team to introduce this evening is our boys tennis program as they come forward. The Greyhounds defeated our rival North Central three to two on October 13th for the state championship, which completed yet another undefeated season for this group. It was the 11th IHSA state championship for the program and the third in a row for them as well. Few notes about the team. Brian Hannan is the head coach. Presley Thoneman won the individual state championship a week later at Park Tudor. And Garrett Lloyd and Timmy Dixon were the double state runners-up as well. With this group as well, they are one of our highest in-season GPA teams throughout our athletic department, year in and year out, sporting a overall team GPA of over 4.0. So, very impressive group. Coach Hannan introduced members of the team. Both Coach Hannan and I did not contribute to that 4.0, so...
That is absolutely true. Brock Fletcher. We have a senior Garrett Lloyd. Freshman Eli Mercer. Shereen Malpetti. Jones McNamara. Senior Timmy Dixon. And junior Presley Thoneman.
Our third state championship team of the fall is our boys cross-country program, if they could come forward at this time. The boys were not favored going into the state finals this year and kind of came in as an underdog role, and I think it was a role that they truly embraced on October 27th at the Laverne Gibson Course. They won extremely close state meet, one of the closest in state finals history. It was the 16th IHSA state championship for the program and their second straight under Coach Colin Altavote, who is a head coach and also a teacher at Carmel High School. This program has over 150 student athletes involved in it, and along with our girls program, you probably see them running up and down Main Street a lot. So it is truly something that's year-round for each of these young men, and they truly represent our community just in an awesome way as well. So I'll have Colin introduce each of these team members that ran in the state meet with you.
Thank you. First is senior Pat Campbell. Junior Will Murphy. Senior Cameron Harless. Junior Ben Johnson. Junior Grant Moon. And senior and team captain Calvin Bates.
Next on our agenda, we have Stephanie McDonald and Barbara Danquist and Jan Byers presenting our Carmel Education Foundation Grant Awards.
Thank you, Leila. I'm Stephanie McDonald. Barbara Danquist is here. Jan Byers is our chair of our grant committee. She reads every single grant, word for word, as do almost all of our grant committee unless we divide them up into specific topics. Jan reads every single one. So she has dedicated herself to the grant program for the Carmel Education Foundation, and we are extremely grateful for her time and effort. We thank all of you for supporting all of the things that CEF does: Ghosts and Goblins, the Telethon, the Showcase, the Teacher Honor Rolls. All of these things are rolled into what we can actually do to celebrate our teachers by giving them grants for their classroom. Jan is going to introduce the teachers for you, and as the teachers are announced, please come up and you will get your certificate. Thank you.
I would like to say that we did award $15,000 in grants, and there will be another round of grants, and this time for professional development and also for classroom grants that will be awarded coming soon because we're going to put the grant applications out there December the 12th. So we're very happy for that. In the round that we are awarding tonight, we gave $15,000. And so we certainly do thank all of the people who contributed, especially our sponsors who help us with that amount of money, and for all of you in the community also who help with all of the activities that we have in order to give support to classroom teachers. So with that said, I'm going to call the names of the people, and I'm going to say the name, and I'm going to ask if the principals would like to stand as well so that you could recognize who the principal would be, and then I will give the title of the grant. So, it's beginning, and let me say, it is my desire and hope that I pronounce everybody's name correctly, but please, if I don't, I certainly mean no disrespect. I appreciate all that you do. So, Holly Grazinio from Orchard Park Elementary, Principal Rhonda Turner, and the title of the grant is "High-Interest Low Readability Books for EML." Thank you. Dana James from Carmel High School, Principal Tom Harmis, "Exploring Opportunity Through Sensory Regulation." Next, Joshua Lo from Clay Middle, Todd Crosby, principal, and the title of the grant is "For the Love of Reading." Next, Catherine Rousseau from Clay Middle, Todd Crosby, principal, "Hands-on Science." Next, Julia Walker, Orchard Park Elementary, Rhonda Turner, principal, "Equipment for Growing Orphe, the Ensemble." Sarah Ahn and Sam Gaw, Kelly Glickman, from Prairie Trace Elementary, Jill Ship, principal, "Play with Purpose." Sounds like fun. Landa Bushing, Julia Walker, Orchard Park Elementary, Rhonda Turner, principal, "Cub Wars Equipment." Katie Bundy, Julia Arnold, Brian Getz, Forestale Elementary, Sarah Inskeep, and its fifth-grade - Sarah Inskeep as principal, "Fifth Grade Novel Sets." Also, Justin Kay and Kathy Weaver with that group. Next, we have Nicholas Carter, Nancy Spencer, Carmel High School, Tom Harmis, principal, "Updatings, Serve Safe Instruction Materials." Sarah Costa, Brooke Jackson, Orchard Park Elementary, Rhonda Turner, principal, "Tell Me Using AAC." Kathleen Davis, Suzie Stone, Barb Torkman, Kathy Fearn, from Mohawk Trails, Jennifer Green, principal, "One Grade One Book." Liz Fields, Kathy Estes, Dave Romano, Carmel Middle School, Deanna Pittman, principal, "Sensory Loss and Literature." Samantha Gaw, Elizabeth Beasley, Sarah Ahn, Kathy Glickman, Claire Edwards, Prairie Trace Elementary, Jill Shippe, principal, "Communicating Understanding." Also Kathy Scholler, Alyssa Swar, and Susan Fear. I'm sorry, when they're on the next page, I'm slow to get there. Next, Becky Colackey, Heidi Brinkman, Jeff Hugnar, from Cherry Tree Elementary, Chris Atkinson's, and the title is "Supplemental Texts for Unit Study." Erin McNerney, Michelle Hewitt, Mary Hoover, Elizabeth Haberfield, from Woodbrook Elementary, also Kelly Davis as the principal, "I'd Rather Be Reading." Amy Morrison, Amy Gebhardt, Amanda Britt, Forestale Elementary, also Sarah Inskeep, "Supporting ROES Series Book Clubs." Jackie Goodwin as well. Next, Laura Muse, Christine Gaviduke, Brenda Sherman, from Woodbrook Elementary, also Kelly Davis as principal, "Classroom Libraries." Megan Osborne, Josh Cole, Bree Miller, from Carmel Middle School, Deanna Pittman, principal, "Scholastic Magazine Choices." More teachers, Adam Ross, Molly Dunn, Hillary McInire, Brooke Schleider, Tyler Davis, and Kyle Todd. Okay, next, Elizabeth Quakenbush, Kelly Flager, Orchard Park Elementary, Rhonda Turner, principal, Quaken Books. This has been a renewal on several occasions, and we've certainly had children who have loved that library, I'll say that. Next, Justin Quick, Ken Brower, Carmel High School, Tom Harmis, principal, "Historic Journey, Cross-Cultural Connections." Next, Christina Rutch, Rhonda Cruz, Andrea Gabor, Christina Slane, Alexandria Walker, West Clay Elementary, principal, Jennifer Schuhas, "Reading Workshop Library." Next, Heidi Stan, Chris Kleeman, Jessica Costopher, Scott Kenny, from Clay Middle School, Todd Crosby, principal, "Fitting Fitness, A Fitness Rotation." Okay, next, Stephanie Strutzen-Druber, Denise Dagash, Elizabeth Wagner, Clay Prairie Trace, Todd Crosby, and Jill Shippe, and it's STEM Stories, Chapter Two. Liz Wagner, Evan Schneider, from Clay and Carmel High School, Todd Crosby and Tom Harmis, books and beyond, an avid book club. Next, Lauren Dunlap, Janet Volley, Woodbrook Elementary, Kelly Davis, principal, "WBE Live Broadcast." Next, Ally Lewis, Rebecca Nicholas, Carmel Elementary, Megan King and Smith, principal, Mel's Corner Book Room. Next, Evan Schneider, from Clay Middle School, Todd Crosby, principal, "Elite Gaming Live." And that includes our winners, $15,000 worth, and what it does for children is just magnificent. Thank you all for writing. Please write for the next round. Thank you.
Would you please stay for some pictures, too?
Wow. If families would like to get up and take pictures, this is a great time. We're going to pause now.
What is it? So you painted the birch trees?
We painted the trees on a piece of paper, then we had out the trees. Then we glued.
Watercolor in the back?
Oh. I glued after we got them. I glued them down.
Congratulations. Proud of you. We'll get some photos up.
Congratulations.
You're awesome. You are fine. I actually do find this a magic.
Can you slide?
We were living on the floor, we were like drawing matron letters on the ceiling, and he raised them.
They're good.
I was like, what? He just too great a sign.
The birch trees.
I walked out to the doctor's office. I'm like, they were rebels.
Did you get your homework back?
I want to get a picture of him.
I want to get those up.
I am too.
Well, go give it back to us.
Are you guys okay if I post this on? Okay. Okay.
I don't let many people.
George, that is awesome. Congratulations.
So were you there when I was in art?
Yes. My senior year, and I switched.
You put a minute in.
I love you.
I like that building. I mean, I loved the old building, but my nephew went there, my daughter did our classes. They did Saturday morning in our classes. When she was little, my nieces did too.
That's my children.
My daughter's in here at their college.
We always will have a love for Muzzy.
Of course, I guess we have to.
Congratulations.
We haven't been back.
It's a pretty campus. It's a pretty campus, but the city's really big.
Mr. Powell probably went to Paul's same time.
See you tomorrow, buddy. See you tomorrow. You have you in your blue glasses. I'm jealous.
He goes at the end of the, on the 20th Thursday, an appointment.
I'm a little upset because my glasses.
You do?
When you come to art, when you come to art, Wednesday?
Yeah, you come on Wednesday.
You look the same, right?
Oh, my God.
I know. But I can say that. But you were always top.
Now, I know the page.
It should be it.
It should be Asha.
I'll probably remember that.
Dashly longer.
Because I have a pen here right now.
And I've never had red.
No, I don't know.
Hello. We're going to call the meeting back to order. Thank you very much, Artis, for joining us this evening. It was a pleasure. Next on our agenda, we have public comment. And for public comment, we have two people wishing to share their thoughts. As customary for our board, you'll have three minutes to share your thoughts at the board. When your name is called, you'll approach the podium, share your name and address for the record. The lights will illuminate at the podium. The green light will be on for approximately two minutes and 30 seconds. The yellow light will illuminate when you have 30 seconds left, and when your time is complete, the red light will shine and an audible beep will sound. So with that, we will get started. Our first person is Writer Heath.
Hello. Thank you for my niece speak. I am Writer Heath, and I am a second grader in Forest Dale Elementary. I am in the high ability program, and I like the program and don't want it to change. In first grade, I was in normal class, and sometimes I had to teach other students. The work didn't challenge me. The teacher spent her time helping other students, and I couldn't focus because the students, because of students' behavior, like trying, like throwing tears across the room. Now, I am challenged, I can focus, the teacher can do her job and not struggle with students. And I am with kids who work together rather than arguing or acting crazy. I can even give great speeches now. I am worried that you will forget about us. Please think about the special needs of my friends and I. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Shridhar Jatta.
Hello. My name is Shridhar Jattla. I'm at 1880 Blor Heath and Carmel. And a couple of things, I am a psychiatrist, and so as a doctor and a psychiatrist, you know, I am very attuned to working with the emotional, academic, and social needs of children on a very routine basis. So that is my background. And I am here to talk about the high ability program, and there is a lot of research to support the high ability program in its current configuration. For instance, Dr. Karen Rogers, who's a PhD, has done a comprehensive study and has stated that students who are academically or intellectually gifted and talented should spend the majority of their school day with others of similar abilities and interests. And really, it's not just about those, any particular set of children. I think the program as it is right now is about maximizing potential for all students. I am going to talk about a little bit about, there was some information at a March 12th meeting where the Carmel Clay Schools Curriculum Director, using pie charts dividing students by race, stated that there are too many Asians and whites in the Carmel Clay Schools gifted and talented classes. And also, total school cluster grouping's first school, as stated in the Purdue College of Education Gifted Education Resource Institute, is quote, "to increase the number of students from underrepresented groups identified as gifted." Now, if we look at things from that standpoint, that doesn't really make sense to, you know, separate and try to engineer certain numbers of, you know, racial proportions. That's almost like saying Carmel High School's swim team doesn't have enough Asian kids, so we need to have 10 Asians on the swim team every year. You can see how that sounds ridiculous and doesn't make any sense. And of course, there are going to be certain number of complaints from parents who want their children in the high ability program who aren't in it at that point, but that's not really a good reason to change the program in its current form. And I am aware that several of, even the board members, don't support the cluster grouping that's being suggested and proposed. But what's even more important than that, what's even more important than that is what the actual teachers say. And I do appreciate, Dr. Beresford, that you have gone on a listening tour and have talked for several months with the teachers and everyone else, but I implore you to speak to the high ability teachers one-on-one without the principals being there to see what they truly think, because I believe, and a lot of others believe, that they're afraid of going against what the principals feel and believe. And we've celebrated all these accomplishments in the arts today, and I think part of that is because of this program. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just say a couple of things. I actually went and I reviewed that, the video of that March workshop, and the Director of Curriculum did not say there were too many Asians or white kids in the high ability program. That's out of context and just wrong. That was not said. Those pie charts were reflective of the actual racial makeup of Carmel Clay Schools, and the whole purpose in that statement in context was that one of the important things we want to do is try to not miss, you know, underrepresented groups within the high ability program. So that was the, that whole section of that presentation was just about great practice, which is always to be alert that underrepresented groups, who, kids who may have potential to be in the high ability program, to make sure they have an opportunity, and that we're watching very carefully, that we don't miss a kid. And that was the whole point of that part, was not to miss a child who could qualify for high ability programming. So any commentary that, that we made some kind of a comment about not having enough of this race or that race is completely erroneous. The point of that whole thing was, is don't miss kids who may qualify for high ability programming. I actually read Chapter One of that Purdue study, and in that study, it does reference that one of the, one of the positives of that study was that, you know, it does lend itself for identification to kids who may not be accelerated, but maybe, you know, have high ability, you know, abilities, but they just have not been exposed to enough, you know, assets like parents who read to them every night or things like that. And the whole idea of that was, again, to not miss kids that could qualify for high ability programming. So I know that's, that's been circulating out and about in the community, it's just not accurate. So I just encourage you to go and, it's on video, you can watch it, and you can see that part of the presentation. But that is inaccurate information that's out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. Next on the agenda, we have consent. We have a motion on the table to approve consent.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of approving consent signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote is unanimous. At this time, I will suspend the regular public, the regular board meeting and open a separate public hearing to allow for input regarding the proposed insurance, I'm sorry, issuance of our general obligation bonds and/or entering into one or more leases with the building corporation, which will permit the building corporation to issue its first mortgage bonds. This is the second of two hearings on this topic. Mr. McMichael, would you like to make any comments regarding these plans before we offer members of the community an opportunity to share their thoughts?
Yes, I have a, excuse me, a narrative that I will read, which includes all the information that we're required to share with the community. And then after this second public hearing, we'll recommend to the board that you would take action to adopt, adopt a resolution with regard to this same subject. So with that, I will just read the narrative to you and members of the audience. So the project for which the board is considering issuing general obligation bonds or entering into one or more leases consists of the demolition of the existing Carmel Elementary School and the construction and equipping of a new elementary school at the same location, the construction and equipping of a new elementary school to be located on property off Clay Center Road, acquisition and installation of technology upgrades at school facilities throughout the school corporation, the construction renovation upgrade and improvement of school facilities throughout the school corporation to improve safety and security, improvement and renovations at Forest Dale Elementary School, Collegewood Elementary School, and Creekside Middle School, improvements, improvement and renovations at Carmel High School, the acquisition of performing arts instruments, completion of other miscellaneous facility improvements, equipping and land improvements and/or acquisition projects throughout the geographical boundaries of the school corporation, and undertaking all projects related to any of the aforementioned projects. The maximum principal amount of the bonds is $87,060,000. Maximum term of the bonds and lease, bonds 20 years, lease term 30 years. Estimated interest rate on the bonds, 5.25 percent. Estimated total interest cost for the bonds, $56,035,569. If the board adopts a resolution making a preliminary determination following this hearing, a notice of that determination would be published, and property owners or registered voters would have 30 days following the publication to file a petition requesting the application of the local public question process for the proposed bonds and/or lease. The school corporation's current debt service levy is $21,515,308, and the current debt service rate, which is .2908 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. The estimated increase if the bonds are issued and a lease is entered into by the school corporation to the debt service levy is $10,953,500, and the tax rate is .1419 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. And I asked Colleen to put up the slide, which will show the debt service levy and tax rate estimates over the next 10 years. For the bond lease proceeds to use to open the two new schools, the estimated cost that the school corporation expects to incur annually to operate each of the facilities is $365,000. Okay, so I'll reread that paragraph. For the, for the bond lease proceeds used to open the two new schools, the estimated cost that the school corporation expects to incur annually to operate each of the facilities is $365,000 per year, but because the two new facilities will replace two existing facilities, the board estimates that the operational costs associated with a project will have no negative impact on the school corporation's tax rate upon completion of the project. The percent of the school corporation's current and projected debt service payments divided by the net assessed value of the taxable property within the school corporation, which is the net assessed value, is approximately .35 percent. The percent of the school corporation's outstanding long-term debt, coupled with the outstanding long-term debt of other taxing units located within the school corporation, divided by the net assessed value, is approximately 13.31 percent. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Roger. At this time, I'll offer members of the public an opportunity to make comments regarding these plans. Oh, you can just approach, come up, walk up and approach the podium, please. Thank you.
You would just, you make any comments that you would like.
If I had a question, would you be able to answer?
We've tried to, yes.
The only question that I had was that, should I state my name?
Could you share?
My name's Stuart Drake. I live at 1515 East 101st Street.
That doesn't really make sense to, you know, separate and try to engineer certain numbers of, you know, racial proportions. That's almost like saying Carmel High School swim team doesn't have enough Asian kids, so we need to have 10 Asians on the swim team every year. You can see how that sounds ridiculous and doesn't make any sense. And of course, there are going to be a certain number of complaints from parents who want their children in the high ability program who aren't in it at that point, but that's not really a good reason to change the program in its current form. And I am aware that several of the, even the board members, don't support the cluster grouping that's being suggested and proposed. But what's even more important than that, what's even more important than that is what the actual teachers say. And I do appreciate Dr. Beresford, that you have gone on a listening tour and have talked for several months with the teachers and everyone else, but I implore you to speak to the high ability teachers one-on-one without the principals being there to see what they truly think, because I believe and a lot of others believe that they're afraid of going against what the principals feel and believe. And we've celebrated all these accomplishments in the arts today, and I think part of that is because of this program. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just say a couple of things. I actually went and I reviewed that, the video of that March workshop, and the director of curriculum did not say there were too many Asians or white kids in the high ability program. That's out of context and just wrong. That was not said. Those pie charts were reflective of the actual racial makeup of Carmel Clay Schools. And the whole purpose in that statement in context was that one of the important things we want to do is try to not miss, you know, underrepresented groups within the high ability program. So that was the, that whole section of that presentation was just about great practice, which is always to be alert that underrepresented groups, who, kids who may have potential to be in the high ability program, to make sure they have an opportunity and that we're watching very carefully, that we don't miss a kid. And that was the whole point of that part, was not to miss a child who could qualify for high ability programming. So any commentary that, that we made some kind of a comment about not having enough of this race or that race is completely erroneous. The point of that whole thing was is don't miss kids who may qualify for high ability programming. I actually read chapter one of that Purdue study, and in that study, it does reference that one of the, one of the positives of that study was that, you know, it does lend itself for identification to kids who may not be accelerated, but maybe, you know, have high ability, you know, abilities, but they just have not been exposed to enough, you know, assets like parents who read to them every night or things like that. And the whole idea of that was, again, to not miss kids that could qualify for high ability programming. So I know that's, that's been circulating out and about in the community, it's just not accurate. So I just encourage you to go and, it's on video, you can watch it and you can see that part of the presentation. But that is inaccurate information that's out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. Next on the agenda, we have consent. We have a motion on the table to approve consent.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of approving consent signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote is unanimous. At this time, I will suspend the regular public, the regular board meeting and open a separate public hearing to allow for input regarding the proposed insurance, I'm sorry, issuance of our general obligation bonds and/or entering into one or more leases with the building corporation, which will permit the building corporation to issue its first mortgage bonds. This is the second of two hearings on this topic. Mr. McMichael, would you like to make any comments regarding these plans before we offer members of the community an opportunity to share their thoughts?
Yes, I have a, excuse me, a narrative that I will read, which includes all the information that we're required to share with the community. And then after this second public hearing, we'll recommend to the board that you would take action to adopt, adopt a resolution with regard to this same subject. So with that, I will just read the narrative to you and members of the audience. So the project for which the board is considering issuing general obligation bonds or entering into one or more leases consists of the demolition of the existing Carmel Elementary School and the construction and equipping of a new elementary school at the same location, the construction and equipping of a new elementary school to be located on property off Clay Center Road, acquisition and installation of technology upgrades at school facilities throughout the school corporation, the construction renovation upgrade and improvement of school facilities throughout the school corporation to improve safety and security, improvement and renovations at Forestale Elementary School, College Wood Elementary School, and Creekside Middle School, improvements, improvement and renovations at Carmel High School, the acquisition of performing arts instruments, completion of other miscellaneous facility improvements, equipping and land improvements and/or acquisition projects throughout the geographical boundaries of the school corporation, and undertaking all projects related to any of the aforementioned projects. The maximum principal amount of the bonds is $87,060,000. Maximum term of the bonds and lease, bonds 20 years, lease term 30 years. Estimated interest rate on the bonds, 5.25 percent. Estimated total interest cost for the bonds, $56,356,900. If the board adopts a resolution making a preliminary determination following this hearing, a notice of that determination would be published and property owners or registered voters would have 30 days following the publication to file a petition requesting the application of the local public question process for the proposed bonds and/or lease. The school corporation's current debt service levy is $21,515,308, and the current debt service rate, which is .2908 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. The estimated increase if the bonds are issued and a lease is entered into by the school corporation to the debt service levy is $10,953,500, and the tax rate is .1419 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. And I asked Colleen to put up the slide, which will show the debt service levy and tax rate estimates over the next 10 years. For the bond lease proceeds to use to open the two new schools, the estimated cost that the school corporation expects to incur annually to operate each of the facilities is $365,000. Okay, so I'll reread that paragraph. For the, for the bond lease proceeds used to open the two new schools, the estimated cost that the school corporation expects to incur annually to operate each of the facilities is $365,000 per year, but because the two new facilities will replace two existing facilities, the board estimates that the operational costs associated with the project will have no negative impact on the school corporation's tax rate upon completion of the project. The percent of the school corporation's current and projected debt service payments divided by the net assessed value of the taxable property within the school corporation, which is the net assessed value, is approximately .35 percent. The percent of the school corporation's outstanding long-term debt, coupled with the outstanding long-term debt of other taxing units located within the school corporation, divided by the net assessed value, is approximately 13.31 percent. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Roger. At this time, I'll offer members of the public an opportunity to make comments regarding these plans. Oh, you can just approach, come up, walk up and approach the podium, please. Thank you.
You would just, you make any comments that you would like.
If I had a question, would you be able to answer it?
We've tried to, yes.
The only question that I had was that, should I state my name?
Could you share?
My name's Stuart Drake. I live at 1515 East 101st Street. The question I had is I contacted the Department of Local Government Finance, and they stated that if it's over $15 million, that it would automatically go to a public question at whatever hearing you decided, or whichever vote, election, that's the word I'm looking for. Would you guys plan on putting that up on the ballot in May or next November?
Well, that information was inaccurate. It's not required to put this issue as a public question. At 15 million, it's permissible to do that, but it would not be our intentions to do that. And the reason we wouldn't is because if a bond issue is voted on at a, in a public voting environment and is approved, then that is outside the, what we call the circuit breaker or the tax cap. And so let's say that bond was 20 cents. If the rate was 20 cents, then that rate would, that 20 cents would be added to the tax rate, if, to the extent that we're at the cap now. And so that would raise property taxes. If we do not go to the referendum process, then it works within the circuit breaker. And so in this example, we would not, and that's what this chart is showing, we would not have a tax rate increase, because it would be, we have other debt coming off, and so this, this would keep it, keep it below the circuit breaker. So it's actually, from a taxing standpoint, it's detrimental to the taxpayer if it's voted on, assuming it's approved. Now, if it's, if it's rejected, then it would be a non-issue.
So how much debt is coming off in the next 10 years versus the 130?
Well, that's what this is showing. With, with this debt, the 2020 estimated debt service tax rate is 30 cents, and so you can see from this, over the next 10 years, the rate's going down, not, it's actually going down.
Right.
By a considerable amount.
Right, but isn't it currently at 28 cents?
Well, the debt service rate is, but
Yeah.
But the total tax rate is 83 cents, or 80, almost 83 cents, 82 something.
Okay. So how much debt would be coming off in the next 10 years?
Well, again, I don't have the dollar amount in front of me, but you can, this chart is showing what the, the debt service levy would be over the next 10 years. So you can see from here that it's declining each year.
But that, is that in addition to the 130 that would be tacked on for this project?
No, that's, these are the, this, these are the
This is what's current.
Projected resulting rates with this bond issue.
Okay. So then, so it's, there's no plans of putting it up as a public question?
Correct, there's not.
And if it
And the reason is, is because we feel, we feel that it would, one, we do feel that it would pass, not to be presumptuous about that, but we, we believe that it would pass. And to the extent that it did pass and would pass, then it would result, it would definitely result in a tax increase to, to the taxpayer, because it would no longer be constrained by the circuit breaker or the cap.
Is the current debt constrained by the 1% tax cap?
Yes.
So there's nothing on top, like, when you get your property tax bill, you, you only pay 1%, there's no debt service currently on the taxpayer?
Not, that's correct. What's outside of our cap is, is our operating referendum. That, that, when that was approved, that, that's, that's not restrained by the cap.
And when does the operating referendum expire?
Six, six years from now, seven years originally, but
Okay, gotcha. Cool, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there other questions? Please approach the podium and share your name. Okay, seeing that there are no other questions at this time, we will close this hearing, and we will move on with the rest of our board meeting. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the adoption of the preliminary determination and reimbursement resolution. And to that, we turn to Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. Again, this resolution contains the same information essentially that I read in the narrative. And so after concluding the public hearings, the recommendation would be for the board to adopt this resolution, which would be the next, next process in the, in the sale of bonds.
Thank you, Roger. And for sake of certainty, I'm going to read the actual full recommended action item. So it is recommended to the board, that the board of trustees adopt the attached preliminary determination reimbursement resolution regarding the sale of general obligation bonds and/or to enter into negotiations with the building corporation. May I get a motion on the table to approve this recommended action?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Pam?
Yes, I, I just have one question. On number 10, you said that we're planning to replace the two existing facilities, which we are doing, and because we're replacing them, then that will be no expense to us. But aren't we planning to remain, retain Orchard Park in some manner so that we can use it? And if we do, then we would have some expense with that, correct?
Yes, we would. This is saying that the, it's, it's not focused on, you're correct in your assumption, that if we, if we maintain that facility and rebuild these two new ones, that that would be the additional cost. But for purposes of this bond issue, it's, these schools are not causing that cost. You and I understand how the, you know, that we're building one school and, and closing the other one, but, but for purposes of the bond issue, this, this project is not directly, would not result in a cost. If the board chose to leave the other school open, then, then there would be a cost, but it would, they, this, for the purpose of this issue, it's not the two schools that caused the increase, it was the, it was leaving open the other school that caused the increase.
Okay, just, I'm just checking.
Yeah.
Mike, you have some questions?
Yeah, I, I just, I'd asked a question before the meeting about a breakout between the cost of the new schools and all the other things, and I just appreciated receiving that information, probably again, just so that we'd have an ideas about how much of that 85 or 87 million was for which. So I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there other questions or clarifications at this time? Okay, then. All those in favor of supporting the recommendation that we adopt the preliminary determination reimbursement of the resolutions regarding the sale of general obligation bonds and/or enter into negotiations with the building corporation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimously approved. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have our permission to advertise for a public hearing for additional appropriations for the 2018 general fund. Mr. McMichael?
Thank you. Since the 18 budgets were approved, projected expenses have changed some, primarily due to higher than budgeted personnel costs. Most of these costs had to do with spatial education expenses in 2018 as compared to what was originally projected. Now, we also received additional money. Some of you are aware that when that budget was built, since that budget was built, our enrollment, for example, also went up. And so, so we, we, so there's corresponding additional revenue as well, so this doesn't have any impact in terms of tax rate or taxpayers. We have the money to support this appropriation, but, but in order to be able to actually use the money and spend it to cover primarily salaries, the appropriation process is essentially what gives us the authority to, to actually spend the money. And so that's, that's the request.
Thank you, Roger. We have a request on the table. The recommendation is that we authorize the administration to advertise for a public hearing on the December 17 business meeting regarding the additional appropriation for the $700,000 to the general fund.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of supporting our advertising of the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimously approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next on the agenda, we have our 2019 Carmel Clay School legislative priorities, and to that, we turn to Mr. Kirchner.
These are the legislative priorities. We had a discussion on them, I guess not the last meeting, but the meeting before that, and I have shared with the board red lines to show the changes, which were either correction, comments that we discussed at the meeting, and then there were some additional discussion point items that the Indiana School Board Association included with their materials in terms of explaining why we were asking the legislators to do our priorities. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I do appreciate, I know that Pam asked a question and Leila responded probably in more detail than I would have out. It is item, under item number two, discussion point, is it discussion point two?
It was discussion point two, but we took out that, that second part of the sentence.
Uh huh. It's gone. Confusing.
The confusing part?
Right.
Okay. So other, other than that, whoops.
That's the only change that I've noticed. I like your discussion items. I think they're very thorough and helpful.
And so it, once approved, these, this package will be given, package, these papers will be given to all of our legislators as you're talking with them, meeting with them too, right? And then we also mail to committee leads?
Correct. Well, we will send a letter to our legislators that have part of Carmel in their districts, and then to also key legislators in the education realm, and then we will offer to meet with any of them as part of that letter, and we are having discussions about holding a forum, might not be the right word, but inviting legislators to come here and talk more about education. So that is something that is in the works too.
And we have a legislative luncheon that we'll be hosting as well for legislators. Are we, I think in the past, we've sent this to the Ways and Means Committee. Are we going to do that again?
Yeah, I mean, I'd include that amongst the, especially since this is a budget year, amongst those that would be
Okay.
Educational and funding
Groups.
Groups.
Okay. Well, we'll start with, well, how about I get a motion on the table to approve? I should have done that first.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Pam?
Yes, I like the fact that on number five, we talk about a tax deduction for school textbook supplies, and I know that this has been going around many years and we're still working on this, but I like the addition of the sentence, Indiana is one of four states that has parents pay for textbooks, so if we can get some kind of a credit on parents' income taxes, I think that would be wonderful. So I'm glad to see that on our priorities.
Other questions or comments? Mike, thank you very much for all the work that you've done to put these together, and I know you've worked with Dr. Beresford and ISBA to help consolidate their ideas and our ideas in our interest. Are there any comments at all? Okay. All those in favor of supporting our 2019 legislative priority signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mike. If you should have any questions or want any support from the rest of the board, we are more than happy to help out in any way we can.
Thank you.
Next, you're welcome. Next on the agenda, we have a discussion for our 2019 school board meeting dates. And I believe everybody has received these, and they're also attached. Just wanted to point out a few things. January 14th, that is the day before, we are required by law to reorganize, and so we will definitely need to have that particular meeting. In general, we have three different meetings, just one per month, May, July, as well as December, because those are extremely busy months, and then we have our fun summer break, so we try to just have one board meeting then. So we will just have our business meetings, and typically, they're the third or fourth Monday of the month. And we opted to push our August 14th meeting to a Tuesday, because Monday's our very first day of school. Well, Tuesdays are, well, let me backtrack.
Isn't it Wednesday?
It's Wednesday. Tuesday's our first day of school, and we didn't want us to be in a board meeting the night before school starts, because most of us have children in school.
I like to celebrate the last day of summer.
Do we have any questions or comments? Feedback? Yes, Pam?
Yes, I just would like to make a suggestion. I don't know how it'll be received, but I would like to see the May meeting moved up to, I think it's May 13th, so that it's not so close to the end of the school year, and I don't know how that will fit with finances and that'll, that'll work.
Yeah, we talked about this morning.
Okay. I'll have to look at the date. I don't know that I particularly want to bump it up to the middle of the month, but it's something to consider.
Well, we do that in December, so I don't think it would be any different.
Well, December is the third week.
Right.
So May is also the third week.
But it's pretty close to the end of the school year, so I was thinking we could have more time to discuss what's going on.
The last student day is May 28th of, wait, that's the wrong year.
No, I think it is that late.
The, okay.
Anyway, suggestion.
Okay. Anybody else have feedback on dates?
I could, I could question one thing you may want to discuss, and that's, it's your business, of course, and I'm just making a, an observation. The April 8th workshop is the Monday after spring break, so I don't know if that's a, an issue for anybody, but we, our Mondays after breaks are typically pretty tired days, but, but I just wanted to point that out, that is the Monday after spring break.
Well, we typically have our meeting then, and I typically have an agenda meeting by phone, over spring break, so.
Make it move it to a Wednesday.
If people are in favor of doing so, we could definitely move it. To move or continue on a Monday?
I think that week, any day of that week.
And it would work for your work schedule? Okay.
Well, this is just discussion, so
Right, right.
I'll be gone for spring break, but the, I'll be back by the eighth with a suntan, hopefully.
Very relaxed.
Go pray for sunshine. Okay, so that's a possibility of a change, that's a possibility.
Okay, well, we will discuss, we could send emails back and forth and kind of throw out some ideas. We'll bring this before the board, December 17th, for official approval, we'll need to, and then we will circulate that with all of our
I do appreciate that
Various media outlets.
Flexibility. I mean, we try to really have a standard, but I do appreciate the fact that we talk about it every year, because you are planning the next year ahead.
Yes.
We all try very hard to make sure that vacations and everything that we're here at all of our meetings. So, thank you.
And what I also appreciate, that our particular board makes every effort to be at every single board meeting, because
Yes.
Not all boards are cognizant and respectful of the dates and times, so, my moment of gratitude, thank you, everybody. So we will bring this back to the board in December. Next on the agenda, we have a series of reports. We have our monthly financial report. To that, we turn to Mr. McMichael.
Okay, well, we're through October, and we're right on track. We're going to see if the balance has dropped. We're a few months. I was going to say that we're through October now, and we're right on our projections. You can see, as, as we anticipated, our cash balance is dropping, and that's primarily because most of our expenses are for salary and benefits, so that's very regular every two weeks. But our revenue, particularly with, with our local referendum, because that's based on property, primarily property tax, we're receiving that, those dollars primarily twice a year. And so next month, we'll begin to get early draws on, on the referendum, and so the, we may drop a little bit, but, but you'll see that change, and then by December, it'll, the balance will go up considerably as we get all the local referendum. And this referendum, because it's, it's generating more money than the previous referendum, if you compare if you compare this year to, this year, that projected property tax is seventeen points, six million dollars, and previous year it was fourteen million something. So, so we've got an even larger percentage of, of dollars that we're receiving twice a year rather than each month, and, and so that's causing that decline through the early months of the second half to decline even more than it, it would have in the prior years. But the end result is, is we are, we're, we're where we would anticipate being.
Thank you, Roger. Questions?
The increase, and that's due to property values going up? Is that what causes that?
No, the, no, that, it's the new referendum as compared to the old referendum.
Okay.
It also, it goes up every year with, with increases in, in property tax.
Assessed value?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But, but the majority of it is, is the difference between the old referendum and the new referendum.
Okay, thanks.
Where do you project our cash balance being in December?
Oh, I think we'll be about, about where we were last year. It can vary some, but it should be close to that.
December, last year it was eight million, is that correct?
Uh-huh.
And in October last year it was four million, so we are.
Yes.
Lot, a lot lower than we were last year.
We are now, last year is, is difficult to compare with, because last year we were catching up on retro pay, if you remember, and, and some things like that, so that distorts. We would, we anticipated dropping about a million too, because of the settlements and, and the retro pays and all that. And so, so it's difficult to, without some of that other insight, it's difficult to compare last year to this year.
But you do expect it to go, to go up considerably?
Yes.
Any other questions?
December's will look like this, and then come January, we will have the new.
New format.
Setup for the new format?
Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Next, we jump right to superintendent's report. Dr. Bearsford?
Thank you. Boy, tonight has been a great night. I tell you, this, we just seem to be packing the house, you know, at least once a month with a, a lot of good things going on. And my report tonight's going to start out with some, some, some bad news and some good news. The bad news is that the Greyhounds lost in the state championship to a mighty powerful, what's that school, Warren, Warren something? Yeah, they are pretty dominant, and, and actually they have a new superintendent as well, so we had a little competition going on, and unfortunately, I, I was, did not prevail in that situation. But the good news was, is that Bo Robbins received the, the Mental Attitude Award, which is a very prestigious award, and it goes to a student who's, a student athlete who's not only, you know, a great athlete, but also a, a great student and also a good person. And it's a pretty, the process to be chosen for that is, is pretty thorough, and what a great kid, and I don't know if you caught his interview after the game, it was, it was just very, very good. So real proud of Bo and, and, and happy for his parents and the way that planned out, but real proud of that group. They were a scrappy group, they were behind in a lot of games and fought back to win them, and it's been a great season for those guys, so I'm proud of the, the Greyhound football team. And whenever you finish your, your season in Lucaswell Stadium, it's a good year. Also wanted to, to report that I attended the IDOE State Teacher of the Year banquet with Sarah Wolf, who was a top-three educator in the state, went to the banquet, and very proud of Sarah. And, and this is Sarah, we, we're all dressed up, we go to the banquet, we have a nice meal, they take a lot of pictures, and then she hustles out to get back for the Riley Children's garage sale. She stays up all night long tagging things with students, and then, and then spends the, the next two days raising money for Riley, so that just kind of shows the character of our, our Teacher of the Year, real proud of her. Thirty-four, I'm kind of on a sports bench here, kind of off and on, but thirty-four fall student athletes signed national letters of intent to play their sports at the collegiate level, so it's a pretty big number, and, and if you got to see that picture, they're all over the United States, it's kind of, kind of fun to see that. We did have our first, I will call it a snow day, but it was, I would call it an ice day on November fifteenth before Thanksgiving, burned off a day, really feel bad about that. But, you know, we did get the, the information out, we did, Courtney did a real nice job building a, kind of an infographic video to kind of tell our parents and community how we determine, you know, you know, whether we're going to delay or cancel or go to school. And it was just a real weird morning. It did not turn out as bad weather-wise as we, we thought it was going to be, but there was power outage going on around the county, and, and that was, it's pretty, it's a bad situation to have kids in a school and have the power go out, and parents are at work, and then, so there's really nowhere to take some, a good chunk of students. So, anyway, I think it was a good decision, but it was, you know, we hate to do that before Thanksgiving. And then also, parents want to receive text messages, you just text yes to eight, six-eight-four-five-three, and you'll get a text in the morning. Also wanted to talk, I attended two Veterans Day programs, one at Carmel High School, which was amazing, and wanted to give kudos to Pete, Pete O'Hara, our, he's the CTA president, but he's also a very talented speaker, and he spoke at the, at that Veterans Day program and was really, really something, and our kids' performances, and it was just very touching. And then also, I was able to attend the Veterans Day program for the city, and, and again, we had almost, I think it was a hundred and ninety-seven coyotes from, from town, from Town Meadows who sang, and then we just, and then we had kids that did poster contests and essay contests, and they all presented their, their artwork and their words, and again, it was very inspiring and just a very special, special time. It was my, it was, you know, my honor to assist the mayor in handing out certificates to the, the poster winners. You may have caught on the news, but there's a kindness rock garden that was made in honor of former teacher Don Matters, who, who passed away, and it received a lot of attention, but more importantly, the kids loved it, and it was very special, and, and the, the title of the garden is Kindness Matters, and I thought that was pretty special play on words as well, so I love it when our, our schools take on things that are, it's more than, you know, it's, it's more than just GPA, or it's more than just high academic performance, but it's also about, you know, being a good person and, and doing some character building and things like that, so I thought that was fantastic. This is old news, but Carmel Bands won the Bands of America Grand Nationals for the third time in a row, and if you got to see that show, in the, at the end of this, you know, they're always like add-on something, they keep adding, you know, one more thing on, and for the grand finale, they added hundreds of string orchestra players, and they kind of just appeared all of a sudden, and the musical quality was crazy good, and it's not easy to play in Lucaswell Stadium and have the sound that good. But also, the choreography of that whole thing was just astounding, and, and I was getting texts from other superintendents that were just like, wow, and you're really, you know, your kids did fantastic, and, see, that was, that was just amazing. We also had a senior, Audrey, I might say her name wrong, I think it's Satchee, it's Satchiee, I think it is, Satchiee, and Audrey, she competed, competed on Jeopardy, and she, she did a real nice job, and she made it through the first round, and I don't know if we know about, it's kind of top secret still about how far she's going to go, and she's keeping her promise to be, be quiet about it, but she was one of only fifteen kids across the country that were selected, and there were thousands and thousands of kids that applied for that, so, so anyhow, we're pulling for Audrey, and I don't know, we don't have a date yet, I don't think, for the next, the next one, but we'll try to get that out, so you can watch her compete. We had the parent school safety night, information night that happened, and since then, we've got twenty-five parents that are signed up for the, the Safe Schools Academy for parents, and so we're excited about that, and Dave Woodward is leading that, is going to do that training, and we think that's going to be a real asset to our district, so I'm real happy about that. The school newspaper, Carmel High School Highlight, received its seventh consecutive Pacemaker Award, which is the Pulitzer Prize of high school journalism, so that's pretty, that's pretty amazing, seven years in a row, and they do a real nice job. My bell ringer is a, a very unique experience I had that, I don't know that I've finished processing it altogether, but I was asked to come to a graduation at a celebration of life for a girl named Miriam Suckaw. And Miriam has a terminal illness, and she's not expected to live, but just a few more months, and her parents and her wanted to have a celebration of life while she was still alive. And as part of that, she, one of her goals was to graduate from high school before she came to the end of her life, and there's a very special guidance counselor, school counselor named Emily Clark at Carmel High School, and she contacted Dr. Harmis and myself, and just really worked with that family to try to make that one little thing come true. And so, Dr. Harmis and I and Emily and a string quartet from Carmel High School came to that celebration of life, and, and played the graduation march, and the, and Dr. Harmis, you know, did a great job of, of, you know, just like he does at regular graduation, and then my turn was to confer a degree, and this is my first time as a superintendent, so I have never conferred a degree upon anybody, and so for the first time in my life, I was able to confer a degree of diploma to Miriam at her celebration of life. And so that was very special for me, and I told her I will never forget her, you know, for all of my life, and so I'll never forget Miriam. But I didn't want to give kudos, you know, to Dr. Harmis and to Emily and to the string quartet, really everybody that, from Carmel that pitched in to make that moment special for her. But really, the really amazing thing that happened, that was all nice, was that she spoke, and, you know, there's a lot of noise, and sometimes we get hooked up on some pretty things that, you know, we think are so important at some time and not times in our lives, but when you have a moment like that, where a seventeen-year-old who's facing the end of her life tells you to eat the dessert first, tells you to cling to what's important, you know, and, and be there for the people who you love, it's, it's something that's, I, like I said, I don't, I don't know that I've finished processing it at all, but, and the Bearsford list of amazing experiences, that's going to be right up there at the top for Miriam, so, so anyhow, I wanted, that's the bell ringer, and, and it was really something special, and keep that family in your thoughts and prayers. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bearsford. That is quite a list, quite a fantastic, fabulous list, and I know as a board, we are very thankful that you are with us, and we appreciate that you are out there celebrating our students, celebrating our community, and really embracing what it is to be our superintendent, so, thank you. Next on our agenda, we have board member reports. We will just reach straight over to Mike, since you serve in a few different capacities, to see if there's anything you'd like to share with us this evening.
Now, I mean, I get, the only thing I have to share is there was a, an email, probably a couple emails from the Indiana School Board Association about their legislative activities, and I believe everybody, all board members should be getting those, and if, if not, let me know, and I'm happy to forward those, and no other reports?
Today.
There were, I got two today, so if everybody else got two today, then you received them all.
Great, thank you. And then Katie, I'm not certain if you actually have a report from Parks Board?
We're working on our strategic plan right now, so that's really exciting, so once that, we have some more updates, and I'll update the board.
That sounds fantastic. I guess our next announcement is our upcoming meetings. We have our regular session then December seventeenth, and then we'll have a nice long winter break, which I think we're all going to celebrate. And with that, meeting adjourned.